One to three of which is standing, what I mentioned under God. It is all for the unity and justice for all.
So let's take a motion to approve the minutes of September 8th.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So the first is a public hearing with 59 Howard Street. Is anyone here to represent 59 Howard?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium. And details, your name is presented.
My name is Freddie Sell, I'm an architect in Great Chatham. Still among the architects, and this is Joseph Darto in the office.
Can you hear me all right without the microphone?
We have a microphone right here.
So at the previous meeting, we left with a discussion about finishes on primarily on the front building, the existing house on Howard Street. We're also discussing the scale of the new buildings behind it. I don't know if you need to look at that, but these are the, this is the front building, existing buildings. And in the plan, it's this building, these buildings here, the additions are behind it. And we, after some deliberation and thought, and you'll see in your package, that we've come to believe that we should finish the existing building in plain weathered red cedar. Both the siding in shingles, which is what it is now in part, and also the frames around the windows. And at the back of your package, you'll see a couple of illustrations of buildings. Were done, the buildings were done about 10 years ago, but you can see what's happened to the color of the shingles with the weathering process. So they even, as you know, as you well know, shingles, if you leave them to weather, become a kind of a gray, sort of a warm gray color. The reason, the reason we think this is first of all, that adding, we, I think Zach made the comment that the intention is to try to make the front building stand out from the new buildings, to pop out from the new buildings, as you were. And we didn't want to introduce another color, and just adding gray wasn't going to be distinguished enough, we thought. And the weathered shingles, and I have, I have the sample, the unweathered shingle here. You probably don't need to look at this, since it's the most, I know it was common material in the world. Okay, they have a kind of, they have a kind of humble quality to them when they're, when they turn gray, kind of a, kind of a built-in quality to them. They look like they belong, and they, the finish itself gives it a kind of weathered in quality to the, to the surroundings. The reason for the trim around the windows, stained cedar also, as you can see from the, from the pictures, is that it has a quite, has a quite of an elegant and simple quality to it. Without being, without being, without trying to really stand out or kind of show off quality. The window frames, we're proposing, as we, as you know, we're going to leave the existing windows refurbished them. We're proposing to paint the window frames and the mounds, flat black. Behind the existing sash will be sash built on the inside, which will also be black and the, and the flat black tends to, tends to recede a little bit in the, as you can also see from the picture of the existing house. And this, this by the way, is the finish on the, the new buildings in the back. And this is the finish on the, proposing for the metal windows.
Yeah.
I think that's about it. I mean, I, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. The picture I took has the advantage of the, the windows are made of, are made of teak. So they are, those, those models in that picture, those mounds in those pictures are also weathered. But they're, they're a little bit hard to see behind it because they're behind insect screen. As you can see, that not painting them white or not painting them some kind of a bright color, they tend to kind of disappear.
So, so. Well, thank you for deciding to take some time to make your decision and your suggestion. One question you mentioned storms, are you going to go with interior storms?
We're going to put some kind of an interior sash on the inside because they're only single glazed windows. Yeah, I, I think you could live with those, with the energy code, but they're really drafty. So you need something to close them off. And in our own house that Tom grew up in, we had storm windows on the outside. Which do a great job, but they definitely changed the appearance of the house.
So, so. Zach was thinking about that. If they just did a single pane storm window, as opposed to trying to do a double pane, that might be very simple and, and on the inside.
Oh yeah. We could do that.
On either side, but on the inside, it would be really.
These windows are fairly small.
They are.
Right. And I think you can, if you have an interior, ones I've seen, don't even have a frame. So in other words, it's not all that structural, but they're just sort of.
That's a blast. No, as you, as you know, the, the glass is reflective during the day because it's brighter on the outside. And so you won't even see what's going on inside. And at night, as you say, if it's just a single sheet of, or a glass or something simple, you'll see right through it. I would, not to contradict you, but I, I would not put a single pane of glass on the outside. Because it becomes very reflective, and, and that sort of breaks up that beautiful kind of refracted quality that these multiple panes have. And it's, it's one of the things, one of the things I hate about modern divided light windows, where they make it a full sheet of glass and then they basically glue the mounds onto it. It still reads like a sheet of glass with just things stuck on top of it. So the beauty of these older multi-pane windows is that they're not completely in plane with each other. And the reflections you get off them are, are different. I think that's really the daylight quality that's worth preserving.
Just have a quick question about trim color. Could you put the picture of the house back?
Of the existing house?
Yeah, just to illustrate that there's. Okay, so this has an unusually wide freeze that.
Yes.
Beneath the roof overhead.
Yeah.
Does it have corner boards, or does shingles come together at the corner?
No, there's, it does have a little corner.
A little board, yeah. So, so my question is, if you're opting to.
We could put corner boards on it. It's, I, we didn't do it in our illustration, but.
Yeah, whatever it is, I'm just getting to the trim color. And the doorway also, replace the door with this wide doorway. So there's quite a bit of trim on the facade of the house, which would ordinarily include the window frames. So, so my question is, if you, if you're looking to do the window frames in black.
See, no, no, well, windows surround, the frame would be, would be cedar. But painted or stained. Just left to go now. Just, just as in the picture that I, was attached to the back of, oh, you didn't get the package? Do you have the package? Here.
Okay, so I just thought, I'm paying two more windows. So ordinarily, the trim, whatever that constitutes, corner boards or not, window frames, of course, the door, those freeze.
Correct.
Whatever you got, yeah. Traditionally, those are all treated the same.
Right.
So I could see with a, with a window interpretation, as these are later sashes anyway, so if you're doing something else with those, so they're sort of popping in a way, but because they're black, they're going to just kind of recede, as you had said. But what about the rest of the trim?
I, I would make it, as I said in, in the illustration, the picture, the photographs that are attached to the package, which are a little bit by 10, a little bit half by 11. All the trim on that house is cedar. And so it all, it has a kind of weathered, you know, it, to me, it feels like seaside.
Very back of the.
So you have those pictures.
Very, very back of the package.
Your hand out.
So, yeah. It's.
It has a kind of Atlantic coast quality to it, which I like, whereas the painted trim looks more inland to me. And that's what I like about that, just the weathered trim is simple and.
I think it's, it's an aesthetic choice. I don't see that the board would object to it. It isn't technically original because we used to paint our trim. It just did, that's the word for all that many choices. But I mean, I think it's very attractive, you know. I think the real issue of the color, whatever it is, is that this original house needs to stand out as being, without being compromised or something that's going up and out of it. And then you can heighten that effect by doing something noticeably different with the new, whether it be color, or texture, or siding type, or whatever, so that that in turn reads as later modern. You know, as long as the massing and the form and all that is compatible. So I'm just curious how you could do that.
Yeah, so it's just, as I said, it's just, and as in the illustration there, to make the house on the street be weathered shingles, and the house behind it painted almost as if it was a house in a barn. Where the barn is, you know, traditionally in New England, the barns were painted red, or, or different somehow than the house.
Be a lot of red.
Be a lot of red.
Yeah.
I actually like that, that color, that orange red.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I, you know, it's interesting, you talk about the freeze. I'm curious about what that was all about. I initially thought that there were clear story windows in it. So we took off some interior finish, and there's no evidence of framing.
When you're on the attic floor, essentially, or the second story floor.
The attic floor is down about here.
So how much height do you have before the roof hits the front wall?
It's about, it's probably close to 4 feet.
So, so you could have had windows there, but you'd have to.
I, I, I took off a wall, a wall finish upstairs, and there's no evidence of framing for it.
And that was just a kind of a cosmetic way to.
To make the house seem.
Make it look, you know, a little more finished.
You're in a shingles.
Because that would have been exaggerated.
Those westerned cedars are hard to get.
Okay, so anybody, Doug, this, kind of, this is in response to your comment last.
Yes, I think this.
So do you think that this addresses what you were pursuing?
Yeah, and I, going with the interior storm window is usually a kind of a big ask, which you're offering.
Yeah, no, I, I, as I said, I, you know, even though I'm a modernist, I really believe in trying to preserve the footprints in time, and, and taking something that looks like it was original, but it's not, and, and in fact, doesn't look like it's original because it's just divided lights. I think sort of, sort of compromises that kind of liveliness that the old glass had. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I love what you say about windows. Yes, you described it so beautifully, the way old windows should look. I, I have to say that I find the trim being the exact same color as the walls. It seems somewhat unhistoric looking. But when you look at the original house, obviously all the trim is being white. And in this case, the trim is going to be the same color as the shingles. And so to me, that is a little confusing, somebody coming down the street might not realize this is historic because one historic house has the same color trim as the.
I think our examples, and I probably should have done a better job of finding examples of buildings where everything is kind of weathered out, and nothing, you particularly see it on the, on the ocean, where paint just doesn't last. And that was sort of my, you know, my allegory here, is that this is in, even though we're not in the ocean on the day, but you know, it's prevailing community, and it, it was probably a lot more weathered looking in its heyday, well, I guess today's its heyday, but in its wailing days than it is today. And so that was part of it, is to try to make that a kind of humble weather quality. And not make it look kind of proud, and it's not a captain's house. And I'm, I'm not, I don't know whether this was the original structure, or, and this was added on, the foundations are different. But, and, and you know, if you know, in Sacramento, a lot of the old houses had a little tiny shack in the back of this original house, and then they had a big house on the front, they had more money. Yeah. But still, this never really achieves the sort of mess, you know, the grandness of the captain's house on, say, on Main Street.
Now it's backwards. You got the big expensive house in the back.
I'm good with this plan.
Christian?
Christian. Pardon me for, Chris has only been a year and a half. I have a good friend in Christopher. I like it. I think that staying in kind with the shingles is going to be nice, and, and once it's weathered, just preference, I thought Alaskan yellow would look nice, because I know what it's. I was going to raise that question, and we may come back to you with that, because I love Alaskan yellow.
It's silver, it's silver is out nice.
Yeah, no, we, we do a lot, and in fact, we just finished a house on Butter Lane.
Looks terrible when you first put it on.
Yeah, it actually looked okay, but it does silver better than the red cedar. The red cedar has so much tannin in it, that it gets that kind of blacky brown.
Yeah.
And it gets almost milky. I mean, I love Alaskan yellow cedar shingles. And, and you know, I wouldn't rule out the fact that we would come back to you with some minor changes to this, and that might be one of them. It's, it's def, I mean, one of the reasons I didn't propose it is it's going to be a budget issue. Because the Alaskan yellow cedar is a lot more expensive now. I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Williams, just ask if there's anybody in the public, and then you have to close it.
Thank you. Any comments from the public, either the present or remotely?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we accept this proposal.
Mr. Williams, you have to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
A motion to close.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close the whole hearing.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, my motion is that we accept the recommendation that the historic house facade portion of this project can be covered with either the red cedar shingle or the Alaskan yellow cedar shingle, at the choice of the owner and architect. And receive the project.
He's just saving himself some time. If you want to hear me.
Wonderful, but I prefer this.
That's the only one he says. My wife tells me all the time.
So I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I move that we close the public hearing.
You already did.
We just.
Yeah. Now you're going on to consent agenda.
Yes.
All right. All in favor? So, from 69 Redwood Road.
Consent agenda. One, all in motion for 69 Redwood Road, June 8th, and 11354 13th.
Second. In the discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye. And for the opposition, so let's vote. So we can sign this today. So, under all business, I guess this is modified, or then are we going to have a presentation on this, or no? This is sort of a request to be changed. The committee remembers that the last time we were here, there was some sketching of putting a depth on the second floor that had been drawn, and now we're just asking about putting the windows on the side to modify the original plans. So the modification has been approved. There is to be no extended, okay, no take it all.
And window panel, you did you part of the plan in that process or not?
No, the windows are there. So I will refuse myself of this, just for on record, because I am building that. And this is the big, the big window. So. Yeah, it's worth the. Imagine one of us together, and I do a couple episodes. It's really just the same. The road change is. So eight, eight feet by eight. So if they want to run the task. Yes. Any questions? Okay, there's no discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the modification, both the withdrawal of the second project and the rotation of the window.
Also.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Rotation of the window, the front window.
It's the side window.
Rear window.
It was counted rear.
Left side.
Yes.
Okay, the next is people from 1A1 Hampton Street. You guys, identify yourselves once again, whoever the venue presenter is. You want to go, Chris?
Yes. This is a lawyer with unforced permits on behalf of the applicant. They're just grabbing the copies for you guys to take and get. There's been a revision to the project based on last meeting and Zach's comments. The proposed garage has been eliminated, and that space has been converted into a rental space on the first floor. So we basically eliminated this garage instance and additional access way there. And basically turned that just to residential working area. Not going to be a garage on the property as a property. Outside apartment. The area is the same as what was previously proposed. It was converted into a garage, this is the rental space. I see that garage took away. Left side, just accessing the storage areas around that. And it was originally accessible to the garage. And then there was also a comment about the exit that was proposed, that's been changed to a roof. The proposed material is still the same. It's what matches the existing house. You have photographs in the file of the original house, was basically a gray, gray siding with a white trim. I'm sorry, there will be some additional vegetation in front of the position. Would be asked that the driveway be purposeful to the garage. So there will be additional screen in terms of.
So there is a main scenario landing. Is, is a doorway there?
There will be. There will be a couple stairs entering, and this area is going to be the living. So there will be a new entrance here.
So what, do you have any indications of what that entrance would look like in comparison to the original?
There's a, yeah, there's an indication.
Elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's also, you can have a little bit of a hole there. That structure is something that is, yeah, a demolition. There's minor demolition, that seems to have come on this wall, where it is going to be exactly the wall. Inside, inside.
You know, outside.
Outside.
So we're going to be able to now get outside of this.
To your place, yeah. Put that table down, all the other main house. Um, if you look on G A eight. Captain, he says, this is a new investment door. There'll just be a walkway up there. Two thousand, planning area. That's the new section, and the new doors will start from here over. Lots of that line, as the reception, that's what calls the next three. It was a, did the garage have? Back to me? Yes, you're right, yes. Um, this is. For our door, so that the disposition can be. A eight.
You just telling us it's gonna be, trust me, is the door, is the doorway?
That's the silent door, yes.
We've got brass, brass doors around it, and then.
Yes. Can let some light into the, the mudroom area.
So all this is gonna be a renovation.
Yes.
No, it's not. And so then, it has, so. But now they're getting the clean cut, and it's very soundly different. Virtually glass. So, uh, any thoughts or comments from any of the, and Zach, are you seeing this?
Yeah, I have a vote, I hope. An existential observation. Um, because when I'm looking at your sheet A eight, which is great, we have the existing front, the south elevation, and then the proposed. I think, the way I look at this is I'm trying to isolate what the original building is, and for that, that still controls the. The project ten, when it was enlarged. And the project now, when it's being enlarged again.
Because that's the portion that's contributing.
Yes.
In the register.
Correct, thank you, so, so the, uh, when you look at the simple number one existing south elevation, it's just the narrow cable section to the right, which is the original building. Which we don't have that, it doesn't matter when, but it was enlarged already with that wing to the side, which has then a structure behind, which bumps up considerably higher than the original house. So, a point being that this is a modest house that has already been considerably enlarged, both in terms of the facade as it faces the street, and in terms of its footprint, if we go to one of the other things, we'll see this has been, I would say, more than doubled in size for the original building. And now, when I look at what's being proposed, it's hard for me to isolate, whether it's a garage or a series of windows, it's hard for me to isolate what is now proposed to the, to the left or the west. Uh, because the entire effect, the whole impact of this is on returning to what is the original resource, which is that narrow building to the far right. And I'm asking myself, if we skip past the existing, and we went right to what is now being proposed, could you approve all of that as an addition to the original building? I think that for me is the question, because that's what in fact compromises our understanding what that original resource is, because there's so much new, there's so much more extending. A two-story thing with an end brick chimney and then.
Zach, I would ask, like, did it already been done?
Yeah, so I think this clouds the.
This is now what we're doing.
I understand.
And my feeling is that it's not. It, it's, it, it's not changing the original, because the originals there, but, but it had been changed a bit already. And now it's just going to, they're just going to continue that, through that. The original has not been changed, that's why.
Well, I guess the principle here is the, is the original historical resource. Of guidelines, or what you, you think about is, must still be the. Must be clearly understood to be the original building, and must present itself with some, it may not dominate what faces the street, but it needs to read as being the predominant piece of this. And even though I realize some of this is set back, that helps a lot. But I think that's the way I would look at this, is, you know, at what point, this is the existential part, at what point does a house can no longer stand more additions? Because it happens over time, and so ten years goes, there's a new owner, and there's new needs, we want something larger, so at a certain point, when do we lose track of what that original house is, which should be the predominant? Building, but you see that the additions need to be subservient. Even if the roof line is the same, I mean, we haven't occupied the entire lot yet. We could go back, keep the distance, we could, so the lot is large enough to host additions, and this would be the second. So I'm just saying that presents a predictive in, in terms of when, when can a modest house no longer, I mean, get extended? Can, do you have that? That's sort of theoretical, but it. That's sheet A eight.
Were you seeing a setback on the survey, or?
I think that the proposed addition is set back considerably from the existing house.
Yes.
You see that on the one survey. So, so driving by, this whole proposed area will recede, uh, back from the front, so that helps a lot, I mean, you know, so what? And I'm sure that's in your mind, you want to do that, you don't have to, you have land in front there, you could build on, so that's, that's on purpose, that's an intentional way of making this proposal recede, so that it doesn't. So you don't have two comparable masses right up there in front, and trying to guess which, which one is which. Uh, so, you know, so I understand that, and I, I think that's a good way we'll approach that, but I just present that as, maybe this isn't the point, if there is a point at which a modest old house can't get any bigger before you forget where it is, you know, on the lot. Uh, so that, that's just a consideration.
It's, it's the package, but I have something to show. Is it all, is it all, uh, being, uh, clad in the same?
In the same, right, yes.
But see, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that perhaps if you had different cladding, different, call them, something that sets the original house forth as the original house.
That's the original house, and then you can see in the, the corner here, it has the, the extension, and then the proposed addition is actually double the depth back of the existing front, and so I think this is twenty-five feet to that.
That's our front that.
That four foot, and then the new addition is going to be fifty feet back.
I don't see an issue with that, that.
It'll be double, it'll be double the distance back to the existing front. So the setback to the front of that.
Distance.
Old house is twenty-five feet, this will be fifty plus feet. It's like fifty-two.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard from, from a two D.
It's a significant difference.
It's hard to see this. How much?
And it already, the photograph, it's hard to see that middle section, and then this will be even further back.
But if you use the same color, you need to.
It's a, it's challenging.
But in that, you know, some of the, the German, just more data, things we did, as we do, change the color, we just had to. Between the additions and the original.
Okay.
Here, to move the addition, trying to.
Like, let me work it out. Sir, the acres.
So we're talking about, did, did you have a survey?
Yeah, it's in the practice. Um, yeah, right beside mine, same, we mentioned survey.
The survey is right now updating to exclude the garage detail, but it's.
But it's the same, the same.
It's the same sun.
Yeah, footprint did change.
So I can go to scale.
Twenty-five?
It's just, where is this?
Twenty-five. This is three, six, seven, but a six.
There's a big fence, like, if you follow to the driveway, it's like.
Yeah, sixteen.
There's a great big, there's a, a bit of that, you can see what's there, the, the addition that was there.
Yes, right, but this is the original. I think that's. This, this, right here.
Right.
So this is the original, this is what they put on the floor. So this is the original.
So that's the twenty-five.
Right, and then this is the addition, we put on whatever it was in the nineties or something, and then this is.
Sixteen back.
Sixteen, yeah, it's right.
It's right.
Right, so this is gonna flush with the, with the second, or, or the first extension?
No, it'll leave the, behind that.
Okay, this is here, so. Show this back.
Okay, right, so this is the existing house.
The front face of the secondary addition, or the original addition, is like fifty-three feet.
This is an old.
This is the old one, yeah.
From the road, and so then this little new addition will be sixty feet.
So this is not that.
Now, this is on scheme.
Well, the survey seems better, simply, okay, that.
Then I didn't, I didn't.
This looks, and you can't tell that, and so it's only going to be scary.
So the ratio is about twenty-five.
It seems good.
Twenty-three.
This is the new version, this is the new direction. This is what, twenty-five or so. I mean, this, this has got to be.
That was fifty-three feet back.
Twenty-five.
I don't know. Yeah, so I think you're doing something.
Yeah, and then this is still a six, seven feet.
Yeah, yes, and this was, and this was gonna be a.
Where am I getting that, because I listened to what she was saying, she was scaling.
So, um.
This is great, sure. So it's the new, the new addition.
So this is.
Thirty feet.
Beyond.
Back.
Yes.
From the. I think that's.
So, okay, so thank you. I think we resolved that.
Yeah, sorry, a bit of a tangent, but I thought it was an important issue.
No, it's.
Illustrated. Yeah.
And based on what we did in the prior case, I think it's good that we, we clear that we're inconsistent. So thank you.
It's all on record.
Right, so, so are there any other questions or discussions or comments? I'll take a motion to, uh.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
The additions, so, and we brought your, I don't know, who knows.
Right, any other modifications, or is it, uh? It helps really distinguish.
Are, is it you, are you making any changes on the plans that they submitted tonight?
No.
So everything that they, okay.
As submitted, thank you.
Thank you.
So I will say now, okay, all in favor? And can you, make sure we have a copy of the survey.
I will send a copy of the updated survey, it wasn't by me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, right. Okay. We're gonna close, whole business.
We're gonna. Well, you guys have to sign something.
Right, so. The people who are presenting sixty-eight Risen, please prepare the phone call. Give me a hard topic.
Thanks. Cause we know. This is the Risen, is. Getting this decision.
Okay. So, then.
I am Brian Locassi with the Adam Miller Group, uh, the champ in New York, attorney of the applicant. Um, the state we're here for sixty-eight Risen Street, the applicant is proposing a nine hundred square foot addition to the rear of the house, a sixty-five square foot addition to the front porch, and a four hundred proposed rear deck, four hundred and seven square feet of the pergola above. As you may recall, this was before you, for discussion night, back on May twenty-sixth. Um, as a part of that, Zach was kind of preparing email memorandum, um, which in substance provided that the existing massing of the house is a contributing feature of this house. As you may recall, the application before you, um, had proposed changes to that, um, feature of the house, they had to change proposed roofline, um, older domestic in the street, so we went back to the drawing board, put considerations in that. Um, the fact that as you'll see with our proposed house, we are maintaining existing front side of the house, with the exception of the expansion of the front deck. Uh, it's no longer going to be a wraparound Victorian style deck, as noted in Zach's memorandum. The proposed nine hundred square foot addition is proposed to the rear, is stepped back from the existing house, so it will be, um, supporting the existing structure. We created a separation in the roofline, um, so it'll be clear distinction from existing house to proposed structure. With note that this property is along Love Lane, um, that property currently has a retaining wall, a four foot tall, uh, stocky fence, which are heading along Love Lane. So to the extent the rear, um, addition will be visible, um, it'll be well screened from the street, and with advances coming from Love Lane, likely, um, not visible, we're removing existing second story deck, um, which I know a lot of times concerned with neighbor privacy.
All right, no, many, sorry.
It's a nine hundred square foot.
In total.
In total, it's a.
Revolting in their house.
Okay, so the existing house is nine, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, um, with opposing a nine hundred square foot addition for a total of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet. Uh, it's under the allowable G F A, it's just under fifty percent of the house. To the extent this application needed. Yes, so the existing house is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, proposing a nine hundred square foot, uh, two-story addition. But, and the total proposed G F A will be two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet, uh, this lot allows for two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six square feet, or under the allowable, the addition is just under fifty percent of the existing house. As I noted, if you had heard it, it's early in the plans, what we did, um, create a break in the roofline, and stepped back the, um, side walls of the addition, so it will be supported and tucked behind the main house, because there is this asking that is the contributing factor of this structure in our right system. All the front windows are remaining, um, we are expanding the front porch, but as noted in Zach's memorandum, it is not, um, one of the contributing factors of reference, and we're removing the wraparound pieces, suggested according to our course. I think you'll see, we certainly, uh, took other comments, which we appreciate the heart, and then came back before you, with, with the modest, um, application on these guidelines. If you're the architect, would you have any specific question on design features? If you're the architect, would you have any specific question on design features?
The west.
This is sound elevation, but that goes to the west. There was a very wide
Sheet already on, sorry, so I can pick up the same way to do.
A five oh one.
Thank you, okay.
So there's actually very wide boards, providing those door windows. And then on one So first of all, question, is that the way the dormer window looks on the existing house for the front, the front act? So in other words, just to the right of the chair, with that line board, it looks like that eighteen is just wrong. I was wondering if that's what's the extent.
Yeah, yeah, if you have, right ahead.
Is that what's there?
Your name?
Please, the architect.
Somewhere at the little shed roof at the bottom of the dormer. Well, what I'm picking up on is the idea that the new extension is going to pick up on the detailing and replicate what's already there. Problem we have in a house like this, it's already been renovated. And so
No, you're right.
I don't know, I, I have no previous history, so I'm just reading a bit. And so what I'm saying is that we don't want to pick up on a detail in the existing house, which is not historically appropriate. We don't want to repeat past mistakes, so, so then that will go through window sashes, that will go to trim details, and it'll go over a number of things, and I'm just trying to get my
Yeah. If, if I may. So it's a very tricky kind of intervention to make in the historic house or contributing house, which has had work done to it over many years.
Right.
I mean, as it is, we have windows that clearly are from different eras and same facade. And so, you know, the approach that we took, and, you know, we took of our Zach, either your comments, in particular, relative to the primacy of the original house. So then we, we proceeded to make a clear demarcation between the old and the new by setting the addition in on the sides and defining the new roof versus the old. And then we, we also went to the extent of changing the cladding material. So this is a very clear distinction, however, having said all those things, and, and made those kind of position ourselves in that way, we still want the house to hang together in some way. And so you see that the massing, including the rear facade now is not a direct quote to the original profile, but it's compatible with it, so.
Let me interrupt you there. Let me interrupt you.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you've done, and I don't think that Zach is saying
I'm getting there.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I, I don't think that, I don't think that, we appreciate you.
Yes.
So, so, so he's not commenting on what we all acknowledge, and what we would say subjectively is a significant group.
I, I understand, this was all, you know, prefatory to simply, simple answer to your question, which is that you know, I think we're gonna need to look at the trim details. The fascia, the trim under the single webbed fascias, and determines, you know, do we bring it to what might have been the historic and original detail, or do we take it just as it is? And whichever one we decide, and we're open to, this, this, this is nuanced issue. Our intent would be to actually have the detailing be consistent from front to back, even though the the massing and the materiality are clearly contrasting.
Right, my only point is I appreciate the massing stepping down of the back roof, setting it back, and all of that, that's all where I was really only looking at a couple of boards.
The fascia.
So to go back to those boards, they're exaggerated, they're, they're like this wide.
They are.
And is that the way they are on that dormer that's in the existing house, is that the detail that's there?
Yes, it is, and it's a very strange drawing.
Yeah, so this might be a great opportunity to invest that, and maybe get the portion, but I don't think of that. Well, this board is not a position to suggest what you do to the existing building, that's what you have, and you can enjoy it. You know, maybe with, I'm only suggesting that from a point in which you take an element, which is not original to the house, and has no historical and then you replicate it, we're sort of exaggerating the aesthetic of that, and then I'm only thinking that that really pops out as being something that's not consistent with the rest of this, which is all kind of aesthetically working as far as I'm concerned. So that, that I think, it doesn't have to be elaborate, you don't have to make up moldings that you think might have been. It just needs to be a lot narrower.
I agree.
And that it won't present as being a sort of a strange exaggerating feature, and I the only other comment I have is you're reimagining all limited placements here.
On the side.
All symmetrical on the south, on that south elevation. So that's
South elevation.
I'm only looking at that one in particular, there may be others.
The one facing the old Mary's room.
Five oh one.
Right.
So
I mean, that is, is truly a functional spaces inside. Your bedrooms in there, which
Which you're changing.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's that whole issue, in other words, you you can rearrange every, all the features of the sun. But if that impacts the appearance of the house, and requires that you change the windows to accommodate those changes, now you're dealing with what may be, we don't know for sure, but I'm thinking that some of these windows, window openings, regardless of the sash themselves, with window openings are the way it's built. Yes, I, I mean, I have an investment in it, but you're, you're basically changing, when you're adding a whole bunch of accessories to it. You're leaving the two that are there, that are upstairs, downstairs, in the middle, and you're adding windows left and right.
So, you know, we were, you know, actually shifting the two windows up and down to the sides of the room and adding an, you know, an
The little ones. So you're really changing the fenestration of this whole stuff.
And that's, well, actually both sides, I mean, if you look at the, at the, at the north side.
Why doesn't this house have windows?
Yeah.
This is what's there now.
It's ugly too.
It's horrible, and it's simply
Okay, I should stop. I mean, so the existing fenestration is real quite strange and sensitive, even then.
You couldn't remember one?
No. Revisory. I mean, that would be my concern, so you usually move the window, they have to talk about that, but if these windows aren't where they really were given with, then you don't have that same
Hey.
concern.
It's a picture of something in the front, so I'm trying to get to one of those more or less.
I rest my case.
Well, as I said, you know, in my introduction I have to make excuses. And the way, I mean, I think there's a major change that's made, which came at, at the best, and I agree. And the differentiation between all of this.
And if you recall, we had a whole different roofline, we were getting rid of the diamond shaped window, all things were steeped and asking across the side, and we're keeping it all back now. This canal has a contributing factor of this property, and we're certainly honoring that.
Okay. To conclude, the board is responsible, this is the primary part of the side of the, of the street view, but it's visible from the industrial view. The side over the board. If you look, so let me just get ask you guys not to let me say this, I think it's time for us to close the discussion. Okay, unless you have any other questions or comments. I'll take a motion to, almost any comments from the board?
When
We didn't finish discussing. Well, I just want to make sure that something is being considered, that's, um, on, and I think the, the big, the, no, the the left and right of the chimney, the added
Of doors.
The zans brought up with those big fat trim things that seem very odd, and, and it seems to be something needs to be
We could certainly address those amount of aisle according to public hearing. I think the comments will certainly be well received.
So, yeah, just do that comment.
And that's
Right.
But the red room, it just looks like a
If you look at the picture
You know, that's why
Look at this picture.
It's a special
That, that
The red room doesn't represent what you're building.
Exactly, same. This is still in your house.
It's over three thousand.
Seven three, okay. Disregard my comment of the public hearings, under three thousand fifty feet.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
No, I'm talking about this, and that
Right.
The entire time.
Everything that Everything is in the draw up.
So I don't think the red room really represents anything, but honestly, okay.
Why does that was the
Okay.
This actually has, uh it actually has
It was looking to death.
In that red room, it just looks
No, I'm saying the red room
Yeah, yeah.
So
Okay.
The elevation, the elevation that you guys decided to
Yeah.
So, so what we're saying so that's why sometimes we look at the pictures. So, so this is not as exaggerated
As much.
As it seems to be, in that representation.
It just shows like twenty, twenty.
Right. Yes.
No, just be sure to show
So, so
Just as well, it's the
So, I don't even think that this dimension is so impressive, but I, but I think to your comment
I see the way you're saying that.
Yeah, if we made it, if we made it proportional or whatever.
Zach said, you said, it isn't
It's
Right, it is
That, that rendering kind of misrepresented what you're actually
Yeah, but that's The last case, so for instance, it's
It's red.
Yeah.
This looks correct.
Yeah, but that's not what it is. Doesn't show
That's a couple hundred cent larger than we expected.
Doesn't show, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I think does anyone else want to make this motion, because I'm, I I believe that we are looking to a meeting
Motion, motion to approve sixty-eight Risen Street in the application for proposed addition, attention of front porch rear deck pergola, and new my
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Zach.
So, getting ready to, to present the fifty-three Franklin.
Mickey. Mickey, you're up.
I'll leave my line up for your hearing.
Would you have just, Franklin, would you so you have Hey, guys, I'm Michael Broden, I'm here for fifty-three Franklin. I believe what you have in mind, you was proposed two hundred and ninety-five, ninety-six square foot addition to my home here, and we brought the DEA approval already. Everything on there is like and kind and typical of what exists, and I'm not going to change any colors, any materials that are used. Side of the diagonal windows of the diagonal trim, beige, crown that exists on the panel. All colored roof.
It's not a contributing one.
I'll be back. I'm slightly hard of hearing, so if you could speak up in the dressing room, I'd be ready. Let's see if the drums come off.
Can you come closer?
Sure, that would be excellent, thank you very much.
So, what are we looking at?
Look, I just have a small reminder, you guys have a large one, if you look at the survey, that shaded area is what's being at
Two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and
No, I just told them that, two hundred and ninety-two, or ninety-four, to be exact. Not adding the number, not adding to the number of bedrooms.
So Franklin Avenue is, is your so this is pretty obscure. You can't see the street, right?
Yes.
It's like thirty's on cat.
Yeah, we can show this back, and then we'll My second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in.
All the nervousness and anxiety was nothing.
That's it.
It was reasonable.
Go back there.
Thank you, thank you so much, enjoy, have a wonderful night, everybody.
Go back to class. Bye, Mickey.
Joe better not hold that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so
Yes, they're on Zoom.
Oh.
Thanks, Cameron.
Bye.
Thank you.
Everyone who wants to add?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. I'm gonna stick.
You wanna check this, or you like listening to
Try to go with dots, might be easier.
They got to be right outside.
Going up the stairs.
Hold that. All right.
Same can remake the good one.
Is there anybody here for? Twenty nine Robinson?
We don't have any of this, so we can't second call. Didn't see if anybody raised their hand or sent chat.
I'm looking.
Oh, this is the show we're gonna do.
Can you, aren't you able to see who's?
Is anybody here for? Twenty nine Robinson?
He has a picture of that. It will be discussion.
That's from sitting by. And a lot of stuff with that, right?
It's not in the.
E G I L, are you here for Robinson?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Eileen, you're not here for, for Robinson, are you?
No, I'm not.
She'd be in, he knows.
What are you guys here for?
All right, guys, they're not, they're not here, and it's a weekend adjourned.
Okay, so we'll table this for next meeting.
Yeah, I'll move the motion table, go, uh, or who's Robinson?
Yeah, I'll say.
Twenty nine Robinson.
I'll say. All good, say aye.
Aye. Now, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.